Okay, so now you should have staff.
Right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome everyone to our new village hall chamber, right? This is amazing. So I, this journey started over four years ago. It was on April tenth of two thousand and twenty-one that we passed a conflict of interest resolution to accept the ARPA funding. That was over a million dollars, almost one point one million. And it was December tenth of two thousand and twenty-one. We just, we finally got into some serious discussions on what to do with the money after receiving the first installment. So that's December of two thousand and twenty-one. In September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, we received a proposal from WOLD Architectural Services for, to do the building design. Matt Pickles over there today with us as well, and he presented that proposal. Now, it took until April twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three to approve a resolution to select WOLD as our architects. On February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, this is last year now, we approved a bid and selected Bear Construction to remodel the village hall. And we also approved a bid with Devout House and Building Movers to move the barn. And that took a little longer than anticipated. So it wasn't until July ninth of two thousand and twenty-four that we held a groundbreaking ceremony. And now here we are, you know, like a year later, and we're now in this village hall chamber for the first, very first inaugural meeting. And now they can start working on the other part of the village hall to remodel it into office space and everything else. So pretty, pretty nice in here. It's a little different than our old digs and looking forward to having many meetings here. So thanks all for all being here, and I just thought I'd read that little history. So the very first item on the agenda is an appointment of a village trustee. Unfortunately, what? Oh, we need, we need to, a, a motion to allow Adam to participate remotely. He's out on business. Somebody want to make a motion?
We'll move Jamil.
Moved by Dr. Jamil, seconded by, by trustee Tanucci. All in favor? Any days? All right, you're in the meeting. Thank you. So the, thank you for that reminder. I don't remember when he popped up there. So the, 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 the second item on the agenda, I guess, would be appointment of village trustee. Unfortunately, a vacancy occurred upon trustee O'Reilly's passing, which, believe it or not, was July eighth, which is going on almost two months ago. First date statute, I have sixty days to nominate a successor, and that deadline is, is September sixth, so it's coming up fast. After careful consideration, I have selected Dave Gaten as trustee O'Reilly's successor to serve until the next election cycle was, which is in a little less than two years. And then he'll have to be re-elected. Dave has been an active member of the HDL GBA dating back to two thousand and fifteen. He's currently serving as the treasurer and vice president. He lives with his family near the downtown, raised his kids here. Co-owns five storefronts, volunteers for the Lions Club. I'm hoping that you will support me and approve my appointment to the board. Any questions? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Tanucci, seconded by?
Second.
Second by trustee Harris. Roll call? Looking for him. He's on the screen right there.
So trustee Tino Chi.
Aye.
Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
I'm glad the volunteer. Just the community.
What?
Mostly, mostly I have, I have a problem with the process. I'm concerned that I'm the, I'm the only female on this board. There, there have to be, has to be one or two females in this community that can, would represent the residents. Being a trustee is a, it's a big responsibility. I've, I found that I had to learn to not voice my personal opinions, but when the trustee hat is on, it has to be a vote cast for the residents. Not that, not that you wouldn't do that. I, I would prefer if, if we, the, I would prefer it if you had been able to attend more meetings, maybe knew the process a little better. Yes, you can learn it. I, I, I'm, I'm concerned that as a business owner, your, your heart might be with the HDL GBA. Little bit less on this side. Prove, prove me wrong. Those are my concerns, and that's the reason. Thank you for letting me explain that.
Continue.
I'm finished.
Yep, no, thank you. Finish, finish the roll call.
Yeah, so in this, President Jacob.
Aye. Congratulations. You are now a trustee. Thank you. I don't know if you can find that to do that. I'm sure that I'm loud enough. You can hear me, right? Okay, raise your right hand. I am duly appointed to the office of trustee in the village of Long Grove, Illinois. Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office to the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. We can move, we can move Adam's name tag down. To the next. Your name tag? Well, Adam.
Oh, yeah. By the way, it's the state of Illinois.
I'm not being replaced, am I?
No, no. Okay, so the next item of the agenda, agenda is homeowners associations visitors. Is there anyone from Salem on the lake? Here, I don't see Susan Klein. We're gonna have to check. Is Susan still living in Long Grove, you know?
Yeah.
She is, okay. All right. I haven't heard from her in a while, so I'll have to follow up with her. He didn't receive response? Okay. All right. So time for public comment. Now, we're learning how to use this room. We thought there might be mics in the ceiling, so if you want to make public comment, you're gonna have to step up to the podium. So whoever wants to make public comment, please step up to the podium. Benjamin Matthews, it should be on, right? Is it on?
Yeah, I see a green light, so that's.
That's so that they can hear you on the video. This is all fancy schmancy. I know we had that Polycom speakerphone. It worked so well, maybe not, but now we have the state-of-the-art audiovisual system here, so please go ahead.
My name is Benjamin Matthew from forty-three sixty-nine Oakleaf Lane in the Oakleaf Homeowners subdivision. I have a couple of questions. My first question is directed to either manager Sparkman or assistant manager McCarthy. My homeowners association president and I met with you early in the summer, and thank you for meeting with us. The first question is, we had, my president had sent an email last week, and we want to make sure that you and Mr. McCarthy received it. That's the first question. The second question is directed to our counsel, Mr. Filippini. It's my understanding that the application for forty-three fifty-nine Illinois twenty-two, the special use application is currently in review by legal. We're just wondering how long you anticipate that taking before you ultimately send it back to the village or to the PCZBA? And thirdly, it's just more of a statement about the CF Industries property. There was an open house last weekend, and I believe that the folks who are doing it are, have done a really great job cleaning up that property, and my hope, I know they still had to go through the PCBA, PCZBA in the process of getting approved, but I, I hope things won't be made too difficult for them, so that way they can get that property cleaned up and moving forward with whatever they need to do. Thank you.
Who's addressing those questions?
So we did get your email. We're writing a response tomorrow, hopefully. Do that. And then in regards to Salem, the CF Industries property, there is the planned commission public hearing scheduled for next week on Tuesday, for anyone interested in attending that.
And the review has resulted in some comments that I don't know if they've been shared with the applicant yet, or if they're in the process of being, but that process is ongoing.
Any other questions there?
I can't get a connection.
It's the same wireless connection as prior, so.
I know. I see it on, I see it, but it won't, it won't.
Is it asking for a password?
All right. Well, while, I don't know if somebody can help.
It's already, I gotta reload it.
You got it, okay. All right. Any other public comment in the room or online? Go ahead. Ryan? Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, you gotta go to the.
Obviously, as a downtown, we've had a very successful year and a half of the events we've had downtown, and the village is gonna start seeing some of that redevelopment and redistribution of our revenue that we've earmarked. So you'll start seeing the monument signs show up in town that will say, you know, welcome historic downtown Long Grove. So again, as we start to see that, I think the residents and the community at whole will appreciate the partnership that we've had with the village to help get those done. It's almost a six-year project, so we're at that, that last hurdle. So I think within the next six weeks, you will see those being placed throughout the downtown to replace our existing signs, as well as we'll be continuing on with the park to finish the park, and then kicking off the holidays. So we're excited. Again, we appreciate the partnership we've had with the village, and the downtown has worked really hard to accomplish these goals. So we'll be seeing that here in the very near future. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. That's what it'll look like in the future.
Can I ask the work the bugs out question? Are you guys hearing a little bit of an echo?
Just a little bit, yeah.
Right, so we add to the checkout list of picking that speaker right above the microphone is probably reverberating.
I can turn it down.
Yep, we're gonna learn how to be AV specialists. It's pretty sophisticated. Other public comment in the room or online? If not, we'll move to the public safety report. Lieutenant Kaiser? You don't have to stand up. You don't want to stand up at the microphone, is what I hear. All right. We'll, we'll figure that out as we go forward. We have a consent agenda. And it's the, on the consent agenda is the treasurer's report from the July, from the month of July. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on August twelfth. Also, there was executive session meeting minutes, and then there's also a raffle for the Rotary Club of Lake Surrock to waive the twenty-five dollar license fee. Now, I don't know with a new trustee, how that advise them, how, how that vote should be on the consent agenda.
He has the ability to vote. Well, anyone always has the ability to vote on minutes, whether or not they were in attendance. But Dave has the opportunity, if he's uncomfortable, to simply abstain, and that will go with majority of vote.
Okay, got it. Well, with that, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, or are there any questions or anything removed?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Moved by trustee Browski.
Second.
Seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call?
Trustee Barowski. Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Harris.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Tino Chi.
Aye.
And trustee Gaten.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Right. Moving right along really quick. We have the village engineers report, and it's weird seeing you sit over there. I don't know if we need to.
It's okay. I'm, I'm good over here.
You sure?
Is this on? I'm gonna let Lieutenant Kaiser borrow the mic next time, because he was a little shy earlier, but engineers report, without further ado. It's in the board packet, a couple of highlights here tonight. Village Hall expansion, as you know, we're in the new boardroom. I know that Bear Contracting and WOLD are working together on some punch list items here, and here in short order, they're gonna start the renovation work over on the other side. The road program for this year, the contracts were approved by IDOT earlier this week, so we're gonna get some construction underway in short order. I've asked for a construction schedule from Brothers Asphalt for the different communities and how that's gonna affect Long Grove, and especially the coordination with the access road past the school property and up to Old McHenry Road. Once I get that, that'll be shared with, with the village. Dropping down Arlington Heights Road, two weeks ago, I commented that Checker Road, and this is in Buffalo Road, but east of Arlington Heights Road is going to be closed for a couple of days. And that was to start today, but I heard that that got delayed, but it will be closed Wednesday through Friday this week. Just during the day, overnight traffic, from my understanding, can go through there. So expect more delays during the construction of that project. And then just kind of dropping down number ten, just a real quick update. We're still working with IDOT to get information on Route twenty-two project, and one of the key things that we're asking them for is the intergovernmental agreement draft between the village and IDOT. I know we got that a couple of years ago, but had some comments on that. Took it back to IDOT and have not seen anything since. I've been promised that by the end of the month, so that is this week. So once I get that, that'll be shared as well. So those are the highlights I was gonna bring forward. If there's any other questions, happy to take those.
Any questions?
I asked them already this afternoon.
Oh, you did. You want to share those questions? Good questions.
If you want. I mean, it wasn't private or anything. Well, my, my, I, I revoiced a concern from, that I mentioned last week regarding the cutting down of the trees for the, the work on, on twenty-two that will be upcoming. And why, why they cut the trees down now, and they're not gonna start the road for three years, basically. And Jeff explained that they, you see how well I listened. That they, they, once they cut the trees down, then they, they have to re, resettle all the utilities, and if you recall, the intersection at Old McHenry and Robert Parker Coffin was shut down for a month, waiting for AT&amp;T to get their utilities in there. Prior to that, they, prior to that, they have to do all the grading and so on and so forth, but it's the utilities that can hold up the job, so we will be naked trees for three years before.
I guess the only silver lining is it looks like they're moving towards actually doing something, right?
That's the good news. Yeah. And my other question was the pathways report. It's complete, but we need to make recommendations, find money, you know? Don't think, don't think so. Okay. Some things like that, yeah.
Thank you for sharing that.
End of report.
End of report. There you go. All right, then, I'm gonna move right along. The, those present at trustee reports. The only thing I'll just say is we did go to the, several of us went to the trustee Browski, myself. And village manager Sparkman went to the open house at SEAL, the ribbon cutting there, and we did that yesterday, too. I know, Ryan, you were there as well. So they had, they wanted to do ribbon cutting, cutting for their new Parkinson's certification that they received. And they're very proud of it, so it was a nice little gathering they had there. That's all I have. I'll turn it over to trustee Browski for any report that he might have.
Not really a big, thank you, not really a big report. The SWALCO meeting was held last week, Thursday. Not really a lot on the agenda. There was the approval of the auditor's report. You know, in terms of our recycling and, and our waste hauling, it's a little bit fragmented because we switched haulers, but the data is available to us. The only thing to note really is that the electronics program on paper appears to be down year on year, not just for the village, but for everybody. And that's because people are not disposing of the big CRT TVs anymore. So most of those have been pretty much disposed of, and that, that waste stream has been reduced pretty significantly now. So on paper, it looks like electronics recycling is down, but in reality, electronics have gotten smaller and lighter, so. But other than that, not really, not really too much of significance to note. Maybe the one thing I want to look into is they have a new battery recycling program, like a box that we could put into village hall. So people, I think Chucky asked the question maybe a year ago, saying, what do I do with batteries? If we could participate in that, maybe we could put a box in village hall for battery recycling. So I'm gonna look into that and follow up on that issue.
Are those lithium batteries or battery batteries?
All batteries except lead acid.
Well, we were told that regular batteries, like the kind you put in a flashlight or whatever, you could throw in your trash.
Right. That's what, yeah. I used to take mine to ra, ra, radio, radio.
Radio shack?
Radio shack, yeah. And now batteries plus will take them, but they say just throw them in the trash can.
Yeah, so allegedly they're safe for the environment. Well, no. Yeah.
I, Hoffman Estates had a huge recycle event this past Saturday. You can't hear me?
Yeah, it's so weird. You're like so muted.
The fan went on, so. Can you turn her up to the, what microphone number are you? Oh, you're good. There you go.
Okay, so Hoffman Estates, oh, yeah, no. They had a big recycle thing this past Saturday. And if you didn't, if you don't live in Hoffman, you had to be a SWANCC community. Long Grove is not on that list.
Recycling of what?
Everything.
Long Grove is SWALCO. They are SWINK.
Yes, and they, and the, the communities, you know, if they check your ID or ask for your driver's license, you know, I didn't want to get there with a car full of stuff and have to get out of line, but what is SWANCC and why aren't we?
SWINK is the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. I'm not quite sure why, why they are in that entity, but.
Well, Hoffman is Cook.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
So Lake County doesn't?
No, we do, actually SWALCO does a lot of different recycling events throughout the county at different times of the year.
Right.
They'll do like a household waste in terms of like, you know, liquids and chemicals, like paints and that kind of thing.
Right.
They'll do that as a separate event. They'll do, um, they'll do like an electronics event. But for the most part, we can dispose our electronics through our regular waste hauler contracts. And the SWALCO chemical events are publicized both through SWALCO and occasionally through our media. We'll put it out on social media as well in terms of those kinds of events. Tiger Recycling, I think they've done one of those.
I can, I can put my TV out on the, on the curb.
Think so.
Yes. They told me, they told me at Best Buy I had to pay thirty dollars.
They told you at Best Buy? I'm sorry?
I had to pay thirty dollars to have it recycled.
No, you could put it on your curb.
Well.
Actually, I did mine on Monday.
Anybody wanted TV, it works. It works.
They did, yeah.
It's a, you know.
They scheduled it. They had a different truck come by, but, yeah.
It'll probably be gone by the morning.
Probably, yeah, you can, electronics is kind of a tough one, because theoretically, we could bring our electronics up to the Grayslake.
Yes.
Station, right, transfer station, but we don't need to, because we can just
Okay.
leave it on the curb, or make the appointment with Gru, which was same as with waste management, make the appointment, and then they'll come by and pick it up, put it at the end of the driveway, and sometimes they want you to protect it from water, you know, they may want you to put it in a cardboard box or a plastic bag or something, yeah. But, so Reed, I said, I know, I listened to those, and we do publicize the events that SWALCO puts together, but not too many of them are specifically applicable to us. You know, because we're, we're kind of a smaller community. We do have recycling, we do have the waste man, are the waste removal, we've got the electronics. So really, it comes down to things like paint, and we already, or paint or oil and that kind of thing. And there's plenty of oil recyclers around, so, you know, paint, you know, you put the, put the wood chips in there and you're good, right? So it doesn't really affect us very much, and that's why I typically don't spend a lot of time like broadcasting it, because it's already publicized, and frankly, it's not. They put together events that
Yes.
you know, where, and for communities that maybe don't have the same facilities we have.
Well, there, there's a calendar online, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Nothing else to report, sir?
Okay, thank you, trustee Browski. Trustee Harris?
No report.
Trustee Jamil. Trustee O'Connor?
I have a, and I, I do not have a report. Well, I gave partial report. I do have an issue I'd like to bring up, and I am wondering if it would be of interest to the board to consider looking into Long Grove approving ADU units, additional dwelling units. You know, as, as we hear on the news all the time, there's a shortage of housing, and we have the benefit of large lots. Even in the city decades ago, the two flats and three flats or the larger homes on narrow lots, they used to have carriage houses. Yeah, because from the old day, you put the carriage in, and you could have, you could have a, a dwelling unit above the carriage house. If you live in Long Grove, you're on a minimum one acre parcel, but if you're on three acres or five acres or ten acres, would it be possible for us to consider allowing ADUs in this town on those kinds of lots? I know that some of the HOAs, if, if not a large majority of them, probably in their covenants have a restriction regarding these kinds of things. You know, you can't, for a while, they, in, in the last decade, instead of calling them ADUs, they called them granny huts, you know, where you could, if you go on Amazon, you can buy a, a, a seven hundred square foot habitable building for thirty-eight thousand dollars. You just have to hook it up to water and sewer. And, and it's a nice little unit. There's, you know, little microwaves and a little stove and plumbing and all that stuff. But I'm, I'm wondering if that's something, since we don't have, we don't have townhomes, we don't have condos, there is a shortage, and would something like this be possible as a way to try to reduce some of that angst that families have with, you know, my, my mom can't live alone anymore, and I don't want to put her in a home. I'd like to bring her here. I don't have the room, blah, 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 blah. Or young people who are priced out of the market. They, they went to college, they have good incomes, they, they can't crack the nut for a condo, townhome, single family, whatever. Would it be so bad to have what, someone like that living, living in a dwelling unit on the property? And, and it's, it's just something I like to, you know.
Can we first find out, can we first find out what our village code allows?
Probably doesn't allow.
We do not allow multiple dwellings of a single lot, so that's not something that.
Okay.
But that could be changed.
Yes, that's, you know, would require a public hearing and notice and an ordinance, but that's something that would be an amendment to our zoning code.
Because I, I think there are three or four properties in Long Grove that I'm aware of anyway, where they have barns on the property, because they used to have horses or some kind of animals. What would, what would be so bad about someone living, a couple or whatever, living in those kinds of buildings?
I don't know. Does anyone want to provide any feedback on that? Yeah?
Yes, I would, actually. I think it's an interesting idea, because a few years ago, I was reading about other municipalities doing lot splitting, where the current lots are basically split in two, maybe share a driveway.
Where the current lots are basically split in two, maybe share a driveway, maybe share a water well, maybe, maybe or maybe not share a septic connection. Yeah, I think to, to something that Rita said, I think the younger generation doesn't want three and a half acre lots anymore. Nobody wants that maintenance. Nobody wants that work. You know, we've had such a flight of, of youth leaving Illinois. May it be kind of, and there's a lot of reasons for that, but, but I know my kids don't want to manage a three and a half acre parcel. They, they've heard me swearing about falling tree branches enough. They don't need any more of that. And they don't want that maintenance. Plus, you know, the housing cost is so expensive, it's so difficult for them to afford. You know, even though they've got good salaries, good incomes, good jobs, good, good professions, it's very difficult for them to afford living here. And living anywhere for that matter, but living here, it's very difficult to afford that. So I'm, I'm kind of intrigued by the idea. I think it's kind of interesting because really, you know, what am I going to do with three and a half acres? Like, you know, it's just pure maintenance to me. I cut the grass every week and grumble for three hours. That's all I do. But what would be wrong with putting in a, a small home? I also have, you know, I, I think most folks know I, we own some property in Arizona and one acre parcels in a, um, kind of, it, it's in the Scottsdale area, but it's a rural Scottsdale in a sense. And it's very common for people to build small casitas on the back of their property and have rental income. Or, or, well, mostly rental income because they usually don't sell those, but, but why not? Take a look and consider it and just think about it because it will help also solve the housing shortage in Lake County. No, I'm, I'm favorable to at least thinking about it and seeing what we can or can't.
Any other comments right now from the other trustees? No? Well, maybe what can, we can do is, Chris, not to add to your plate, but maybe this is something you can try to put some parameters around if we would do this, what it might look like and talk to Chris and Rita both?
Yeah, you know, it can't be, it can't be a way to sneak in an Airbnb.
Right.
You know, it's not, that's not the intent. That would not be the purpose.
Somebody has three acres or five acres and maybe they could put an additional dwelling on it that could be used.
Parents.
Parents, yeah.
You know.
Right.
Kids, whatever. Better than living in your basement.
So maybe you two can provide the input for what you are thinking and maybe something get framed up and how we could do it.
Is that, can we take a straw poll? Is any, are we the only two? Because if we're the only two, you know.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what I don't know yet, so I think that-
Big no.
No, but I, I don't, I don't know what I don't know yet because if it's, somebody has five acres and they, they want to put like a cabin there that could be rented out or kids could use and has plumbing on it. I don't know that I have a problem with it, but somebody has like an acre and a half and they want to put a small, most portable housing on it, house on it, I might have an issue with it, right? You know?
Well, yes, but it, and, and those are the kind of parameters that are important.
Right.
You know, how many, what size must be, you know, maybe permitted with family members or whatever.
Well, I mean, we could take a straw poll. Would any, would entertain something? How about that? Not because I don't think that we can, you gotta look, you know, you gotta lay it out, like, what are you really thinking, you know? And then the pearls and cons, so, but would, would anyone consider it? Would you get it?
I'd have to think about it. I'm not sure.
I'm going to put trustee Gaetan on the line. Would you think about it?
Also, you know, my two biggest supporters are in favor of this. It's hard for me to go against them, but I would say this, Ted.
Ted's fair.
I love the, you know, the look and feel of Long Grove the way it is now, so in changing anything, I'm very hesitant on, on change that, something like that. Because I think you'd have to have so many rules in place to stop things from, you know, other look and feel isn't, we don't want to look at like, you know, Airbnbs, we don't want to look like it's, we don't want them all to look like these hotels. We got these massive houses right there on, over Penrin. The one looks like a hotel, I mean, a couple of them look like hotels, they're so big. I don't want so many buildings on one area that looks like a compound. But I do understand the need for other house. Because the problem is people that love Long Grove, they leave Long Grove because they don't have another option. They're tired of the big lot, they can't take care of that and they get, so we're, we're people, we're, we're losing the people that love, love the town, but we're not making, there's no other housing options. So I'd love to see that we look into, you know, I guess I'm not thousand percent against it, but I mean, is there places to put townhomes or, or, you know, some things like, and that's, I guess, you know, looking more at the comprehensive plan of where we, where, if that's even possible, where the coasting speak though, so.
I think townhomes certainly are possible, so are condos, traditional condos. The, the, the issue is, are they affordable? You know, are, can, can a family fit the budget? Not everybody. I, I, we know that, that statistically, Long Grove is considered a, a wealth, a wealthy community. When it comes to housing mom and dad, when you're, you know, if you're facing nursing home of 10,000 a month or 7,500 a month, what, whatever the numbers are, and you, that, that can break a lot of families. And, and I, I think to your point, as far as the aesthetics of the unit, the architectural control committee would, would have jurisdiction over that kind of thing, you know, it's, I, I would, I would suspicion. So, but I, I, and I guess at this point, I'm just wondering about the idea of it. If, if, you know, three out of five say, that's the worst idea I've heard in, you know, 75 hours. It's like, okay, okay, then we're not gonna, you know, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there to.
Oh, thank you for that. Trustee Jamil?
I'm open. I'm open to have some framework because, you know, right, we need to see if there is any options for downsizing, which will hurt the community and then the people who are leaving with fear of taxes, they can downsize and live in Long Grove still. So I'm open to that idea.
All right, you probably have enough direction to- Oh, Adam, did you comment? You're right, you're remote there. Adam, can you comment?
Initially, I, it, it seems I have concerns. You know, I, I agree with Rita. I, I don't see a difference in putting in addition to a home as opposed to building a little cottage or whatever on the property for relatives or elderly parents. But just initially, I feel like it, it said, it could be a slippery slope. I could see issues with regulating, monitoring and enforcing whatever ordinance is created. My gut tells me that I'm, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of the idea, but I'd be willing to look into it or have somebody look into it and hear what they have, have to say.
Can I, can I comment on? Kind of, kind of comment on that comment, sorry. The, the reason it's different than an addition to a home is because in my case, if I put an addition on my home, I've got, I've got to bring my entire home up to a code, which would mean installing a complete fire extinguishing system per code. Or if you build a new small house, that house has to be code, but I don't have to go back and redo my whole house just to put the addition on the house. And that's actually why I haven't expanded my home, so I don't want to go through and try to retrofit a sprinkler system in, to a lot cabin. It doesn't work so easily.
Yeah, and so I agree with you on that, Chris, so that's why I say I don't see a difference in that. So, so in that regards, I agree with you. I, I just, my concern is that the people utilize it to turn it into rental income, Airbnbs, things of that nature, things that we, we might not necessarily be, be fans of. But I, I think, you know, let's explore more and see what we figure.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Maybe the stipulation would be that this should not be a revenue producing building.
Yeah, the, the challenge is enforcing it, right? So once you let people build structures like this, how, how do you enforce it and, and monitor it? So-
Right.
And that's kind of what I mean with the slippery slope.
Let me go a different route. What if I split my three and a half acres and built a 5,000 square foot home on it? Just to alleviate me of mowing three and a half acres of grass? I mean, would that, wouldn't that be make, wouldn't that make some kind of sense?
My concern isn't as much for the, the three and a half acre property owners, it would be more for the smaller lots.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Of that nature. But yeah, so, yeah.
But I think that, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's it.
No, I think there was a little bit, there was some support, so it's just, I, I think that maybe you two should get together and just like put that out there because I don't think, I'm, I'm guessing this is not like a massive thing, right? There's going to be certain requirements, you'd have to have three acres, it would be, you know, a, a house that would have to be of certain size minimum and-
And I would think the HOA is probably going to restrict that.
Right.
So it's going to be pretty.
Where it could go.
I'm sure there is a precedence in other village for this kind of step down process of construction. Make a look into those, see what parameters and framework they have, so to get an idea so that we can worry about it.
Okay, end of report?
Yes, end of report, thank you.
All right, trustee Tanucci? Nothing to report. Trustee Gaetan? What do you mean you don't have a report? What do you mean? Right, bills manager Sparkman?
Yeah, I just want to thank the team here at Village Hall and all the contractors we had working to get the addition over the hump today. It was, did not look like this this morning, so we were glad it all came together. I just want to thank everyone and the rest of this week, we're going to be moving the team into this side temporarily. So, and so they can complete the additions over there. So I just appreciate all the patience if there's any hiccups with the phones or people coming in because we don't have a front counter or anything, so we're working through it, so I just appreciate the patience from everyone.
Thank you. So we're going to test out how we do executive session here, but we, can I have a motion to go into exec, executive session to discuss personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee Broowski. Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee O'Connor? Trustee Broowski?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Aye.
Trustee Jamil?
Here.
Uh, trustee Gaetan?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Well, we're going to stay here, we're going to go into that room over there.
Let's stand here.
Okay, we're staying here. So very short meeting and hopefully we're not here much longer. I know Dr. Jamil wants to go, but thank you, everyone.
All right, I would take your photo for Dr. Jamil. All right, so let's do a, Chris, you guys sit down.
Want me in it? Why is the photo for Dr.?
Do we know who those people are?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
All right. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan, appreciate it.
President? Yeah, can you just?
Thank you. Looks good.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, goodnight everyone.
Just on the meeting.
I'm sorry, we kept saying.
End the meeting and it'll stop.